Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody at this time. Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
She was there.
Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'm here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Armed as present, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
By Councilmember Thorson, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye. The agenda is adopted. This time we have the presentation for the Veterans Committee. And they're all out and back here.
Thanks.
So at this time, we do have a presentation and I'm honored, the council is honored, to be able to present this today. This actually was an award that was given last year, but because of COVID, we've been putting all these awards aside. But we're honored tonight to honor the Veterans Committee with, for their commitment in Veterans Park for all these years. We've had many members come and go, but right now we have a great crew of people. And what I'd like to do is maybe ask the Chair, Dan Fisher, to maybe come up to the frontier. And what we'll do, we'll kind of social distance and present the award to you. So anyways, so this is the team. Dan, I don't know if you wanna, if we wanna introduce everybody or if everybody, anybody, everybody wants to introduce themselves. That'd be great. So this is the Veterans Committee team. They've been together for many years. Dan, if you want to just quick say a few things.
I think what we got here is 10, 12, maybe. The team after the, the opening of the park was 2015. We had a pretty small team, but since that time, we've got a lot of people join on. And I think we're like 19 people of variety. Some people can't be here tonight. And I do have a list of everybody. You want me to read it?
Yeah, or I can read it or... So is it being on? Yep.
Listen, the list of people who really participated since, since about 2018 where they came on and the originals moved on to other jobs. Many have stayed. Bruce and Sandy Fabio over here, technical experts. They provided all of our website information. They kept us in the loop with everybody. Carrie Urbanback, who came in as a replacement for Lori Conley. Carrie Bleese, Pat Swanson, they're from the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are greeters at any function. Terry Furlong is still the liaison to the mayor, so he... So he gets, he gets two times the pay. And Sandy Furlong, our treasurer who keeps Terry honest. Angela Strong, she's our events coordinator. Jared Coons is an events coordinator also. That we have like the POW MIA parade and any of the last year's fifth anniversary. Don Schroeder isn't here tonight. Don is also events. Carl Hurtgen, the co-chair of the committee, has been with us since day one. Mary Lee Carlson isn't here, but she is the person who takes all the data and puts it into a spreadsheet. So we can keep track of how many pavers we have and who they are. Archie Vikerman is from the Legion. He's our contact there. Carrie Fisher, my daughter, she's a graphic designer. She makes the books, the sign that you see up there. Anytime we have to generate that, she's the person that we go to. Scott Dudik, who does everything that we need to get done from day one. Lori, I said, David Wilkinson, ROTC, he's up there at the school. He gets the, the kids participate as, as partners in this. Paul Anderson, the historian, he's, he's the guy that gives us a spark. And, and then I'm on there too. So that's the 19 people who have been working at this.
So it's my pleasure to honor the whole group, the whole team with this plaque. It's gonna be passed to each house every week. Each house, so, but again, the council, myself, we're honored that this team has come together. Veterans Park, we're all very proud of it. Our citizens are very proud of it. What goes on down there, it really benefits the whole community.
You're the big part. You're the big part.
Well, I appreciate that. But to you and I don't know, do you wanna give it to someone?
Terry, Terry was the spark because in 2010, he captured a lot of us who came into his door. And said, "How would you like to be on a Veterans Park committee?"
See what a six-pack does.
We got trapped right away.
So I do have certificates for everybody and I'll read off your names. Bruce and Sandy Fabio.
Thank you.
For you.
Thank you.
To myself, to my lovely wife, Angela. Jared. Paul. City Manager. Ann Fisher?
Another award.
That's it. Thank you, everyone. You know, bottom of my heart, it's just been a great working with everybody. I think we are a great team. I think we all work great together and I look forward to, you know, this park, even more things happening. So, thank you. Yeah, get a picture real quick, Carrie? How do you, if you wanna?
Smile with your eyes.
Thank you all.
Such a good crew of people. So at this time, we have the consent agenda, which is the March 2nd workshop meeting minutes, the March 2nd regular meeting minutes, the March 2nd closed meeting minutes, general accounts payable of $940,196.62, the EDA accounts payable of $1,272.88, HRE accounts payable of $1,517.97, Church of St. Peter gambling application, the purchase of energy savings kits, and the MMPA's 2021 payment rate for distributed generation. At this time, if any council member would like to poll any items, they can do so at this time. I'm assuming D and H.
Yeah, D and H, please.
Yep, we'll poll D and H. So motion to approve the consent agenda and we'll move D and H to the general. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
Thorson, second by Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Meeting now is open to the public and we would like to keep it within three minutes for each person. Do we have somebody?
Mayor, we do. We have two people with their hand raised. The first one will be Sean. He should be unmuted now.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Just wanted to give a quick update. I had a meeting with Scott and Morgan. Seemed to go okay. I wanted Scott to know I'm working on getting photos. We're having a really hard time finding the photos from the second flood. We've lost a camera in the process and I've also been hacked, so I'm having a hard time finding the second ones. I'm gonna try to get them to you as soon as possible so you can try to get that off to the DNR. I did have some concerns about our meeting. They were, I know they were talking about possibly building on this site again, one of those student billet homes or whatever. And you guys can do whatever you want after I'm gone, but I, you know, I just, I've lived down here for the past, I don't know how many years, since 2008. And man, I, I just wanna be on record as saying is that's a bad idea unless the streets get fixed. And you guys have been adamant about there's no drains going in, there's nothing getting done to the streets. So I just wanna be on record because Morgan mentioned, I showed him a picture that I sent to you, Mr. Mayor, of my truck. It's a, it's a full-size Chevy Silverado for those that haven't seen the picture, that the water's up to the doors. And he, he told me that's normal. That's normal in lots of cities and stuff. And man, I, I'd like to get a list of those cities so I don't move to them because that's, everybody, everybody that I show that picture to, they just laugh and say that, that should not be normal. Also, I'm, I kinda, I mentioned it to Scott and Morgan. It just kinda seems like you guys are kinda hesitant. I don't know what's going on with the house or something. But you guys were quick to take down that house on the corner and build a pond for the two new houses. And I'm still kinda upset about the two houses that went in behind my house. When that property went up for sale, I don't, I'm not a good numbers guy, but I think if I could've ran the math, you guys could've bought both pieces of that property for probably less than what you're gonna probably buy my house for and probably built a pond. I don't know. I don't know. They threw a whole bunch of, well, the pipes go this way, the pipe goes that way. We can't do that. The watershed says this is illegal, that's illegal. And they said that they purchased that house for the Seven Street project, not for those houses, which I, I don't know. Sometimes I feel like I'm getting the wool pulled over my eyes. The other thing is, you guys have got me watching workshops now. That's how stressed out I am about all this stuff. And I watched your last, two weeks ago or whatever. Is, is your lawyer there tonight?
He is not. Oh, wait, yes, he is. Yes, he is.
Can I ask you a quick question about the, he mentioned something about closed-door meetings. And you guys had one last week. And he mentioned something that they're available to the public. Cause he doesn't understand why they have closed-door meetings because they are available to the public. How do I get my eyes on that meeting? Cause I would like to hear what's being said.
I'll turn it over to City Manager real quick here.
And Soren is online. He can address that, that legal question and how that's handled for our closed sessions. Soren, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Sean, they can close meetings when they're discussing the idea of purchasing or selling property, which is why they closed it. Those tapes aren't available to the public until it's been decided to either purchase the property or abandon it. So those tapes are not available to the public at this point, but at some point they will be.
How do I go about getting that? Do I just call the city and say, "Hey, decision's been made"? Cause either way, I'd really like to see.
You can put in your request. At this point in time, you'd be told that it is private data and can't be disclosed. But once a final decision is made, those tapes become public and you'd have every right to access them.
Okay, so who do I talk to about that?
City clerk takes data practice.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, so I don't know. I just, my, my whole thing is, man, I, I never even asked to be bought out. I told you, I told you guys from the very start, man, I, I bought this house for a reason. Because it's a perfect spot for me and my fiancee. And I just want the street fixed. And you guys are obviously not gonna fix it. And it seems like you guys are making this real stressful and real hard on me. You've obviously made it, made it abundant clear, abundantly clear that you're not gonna fix the street. They kept showing me drainage situations and this and that. And the drainage doesn't go anywhere but my yard and my, my street and stuff in front of my house. And I, yeah, I, I just don't even know, man. I'm so frustrated. I honestly, I don't even wanna be bought out. I just want my street fixed. How much is it gonna cost to fix the street, you know? It's gonna be too much is what I've been told. So then, you know, then, I, then you just need to buy me out. And I, I just, I can't keep stressing about this. I can't keep staying up at night. I can't keep throwing up in the morning. And I, you know, I don't know. I wish I could've got you the photos sooner so the new council members can see what I'm going through. Because they, they're new. They probably just, just like, what was it? Soren, the last council member, I never, he never even spoke to me. He never talked to me, never emailed me. And I wanted to start a good thing with the new council members and let them know what's going on down here. Because I'm pretty sure they just hear your guys' side. No, you're not, they're not hearing my side. And it's not, that's not normal. Water up to a door, a full-size Chevy pickup, man, is not normal in front of houses. I, I grew up in the, in the lowest spot in Whitebird Township over, just, just down the road from here. And I had a little Monte Carlo back in the day and it, it never even came close to flooding. And parked right out in front of my house every day, my parents' house. And just, it never even came close to flooding. And it's the lowest spot in Whitebird Township. And I, and I know everything was built a long time ago and the stuff can't hold it. But before you guys let them buy them houses behind me, you guys should've, you guys should've tried a DNR grant from back then. And I don't know if you tried and it doesn't sound like it. It just sounded, cause everything went through pretty fast. I didn't, you know, this has been dragged out quite a long time and that kinda just all of a sudden they're surveying, building a pond, you know, building houses. That, that went through pretty quick. My, my stuff, I've been dealing with it since 2011. So that's my two cents. I'm sorry, the wild start in like five minutes. And you guys can say whatever you got, but I don't know.
Appreciate it, Sean. Do we have somebody else?
Yep. Next person we have is John, whose hand raised. I'll...
Welcome, John.
Should be able to talk now. Go ahead, John.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Things were kinda laid back today and I thought there's something wrong. And I realized that there was a council meeting tonight. This is the second or the third, yeah, the second Tuesday, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday of the month.
Third Tuesday of the month. I went to, I thought, what the heck? I didn't know that. And went to my email, which on Friday before usually contains at least two messages produced from the city telling of the upcoming meetings, if there are changes, which there usually are and there was this time, there would be another message. But there wasn't. There was nothing in my email. I thought, what is going on? It's been three years or more that I've been receiving these messages notifying me, anyway, of the council meetings. So not to be the only one in the situation, I called the other John and asked him if he signed up for receiving these messages. And did he receive any for this meeting? And I realized by going on the website that there was another meeting that I didn't receive notification. And that was the retreat on March 9th. And he said he's received nothing either. So either it's an conspiracy against John's, or there is something wrong with your system. Because I've received nothing and he received nothing. Maybe we're the only two people who have signed up for it that haven't received it. But the North St. Paul Technology has risen up and bit me again.
Hopefully that's not the case, John, but I'll...
Where do we go from here?
No, I'm not aware of any changes whatsoever. That's the first I've heard about it. We'll certainly look into find out, but...
We'll look into it, John.
Okay. And the other item is that you had on the workshop, the downtown layout of what the parking arrangement and everything else is going to happen. And I'm coming from this, or making this statement because of a very humbling experience. And that is having to go to my doctor and asking for a handicap parking spot because I wasn't getting around very well. And I noticed that for the first time, I think that the most visited place in all of North St. Paul is the post office. And I think it is now and it was laid out in this new plan that there is a bump out there. And the new plan has two trees. And I think it would be very nice that, that might be replaced with handicap parking spots. And to also mention the fact that this whole parking area and the WSB presentation, there wasn't any of the parking spots indicated as handicap spots. And you would think that if you're laying out parking areas, that the handicap areas would be paramount to have them indicated in any, any plan that you're going forward with, which it wasn't. But I'd like to put my two cents in from my viewpoint at this particular point in time. That maybe handicap parking spots closer to the post office be thought of and remove the two trees and the bump out. That's it.
All right, point taken. And Scott's writing that down. And we're all kinda shaking our heads here, John. So yeah, it's a good point. Anybody else?
Advocate, the advocate, the biggest advocate for ADA on the council is no longer a member. So maybe that's why I got by. So that's all.
Follow up with you, John, on the email also. I'll look into that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's all, Mayor.
We have no public hearings. Now we've got city business and action items and recommendations and I'll turn it over to you, City Manager.
Okay. Mayor Council, I guess the first one that I have is the purchase of the body worn cameras. We've talked about previously and again, going back when the policy was created for that. And again, this will be something that will, will continue to come forward as we, as we develop the, the program and move towards utilization of those. But this evening, what I have for you is a list of equipment that we've gone through. These items are all on, on the state contract. And Panasonic is the brand that we're proposing to move ahead with. The Panasonic arbitrators is the equipment that we currently have in car now. So the, we've had onboard cameras in the squad cars up to this point. And with the four new vehicles that are coming this year because of the non-purchasing in the, in the last two years, we have actually four cars coming this year. So what that will allow us to do is to upgrade the equipment in those cars to the digital cameras. So you'll see in the proposal here tonight that there is a, let me bring, bring this up. The first section is there's four Panasonic arbitrators in-car video systems. And so those would go into the new vehicles that are coming. What we've done historically over the years is we've continued to remove and reinstall the cameras that we've had. So there are many versions old. They're all the old analog camera. The new one would be the HD high, high definition. Uh, the new one would be the HD high, high definition digital cameras. So under this proposal that we have before you this evening would be to outfit those two new, or the four new cars with new equipment to coincide with the, uh, body worn cameras that we're, we're purchasing. And again, these are all on, uh, on the state contract. And then the other quote is for, uh, the actual body worn cameras, uh, and there's 23 of them that you'll see listed there. Um, and the idea behind that is to, uh, fit each, each officer with a camera. Also, um, factoring in based on a recommendation from manufacturer, um, spare, and also having the availability for use by, uh, CSO officers and/or reserve, um, depending on, on their, on their assigned duty. This has the, um, the mounts or the hardware used on the, on the uniform to hold the camera. It has the, um, um, triggering equipment for in the squads, um, for pairing the, uh, body worn camera to the, to the squad camera. Um, also has extended warranty on the cameras, and then the licensing period. Uh, so the extended warranty on the cameras is, uh, uh, five years. It's basically the similar or same program that we have with our fire pagers in the fire department for those first five years. They're virtually covered, um, almost for anything, and, and other than if somebody forgets about it and runs over it. But otherwise, they're covered, um, and normally at the end of that five-year period is when we're looking at, at replacement from that period on. So this would give us a, um, a full coverage and operational of the equipment for those, for those five years. And again, this is a system that instead of, um, storage to the cloud, this, all this information would be stored in our servers, um, here. I don't wanna necessarily say in-house, but through our Metro Inet group, uh, the servers have been set up well in advance, and what we've been using now for our onboard, um, cameras in our squad cars. Um, what will need to be done and is prepared already is just partitioning for additional storage space for the body worn cameras that we will be purchasing to store that, uh, data. But at least then, that data is stored here, and we maintain it. Some of the concern with the, uh, with the cloud storage is that, um, it's stored there and it's, uses a proprietary software to, uh, decode and, and index that software. So it's fine as long as you're under contract with that company, but should you decide to change contract, now you have a, a mess, because all you have is a, is a bunch of data that's, you're unable to index or sort or, or go through. So the decision or recommendation has been made after looking into this with both our IT department and our officers, uh, to stay with the Panasonic equipment and use the storage in-house on our current servers within the Metro Inet group. The total, total equipment cost for both the, uh, the body worn and the in-car is, uh, fifty-six thousand, six oh six. And, uh, we're looking for your approval to, to move ahead with this purchase. I will also add that the, this contract, um, for the in-car equipment is in place. I believe it was until, um, March 31st, when, under the state contract, it'll always be under state contract, but they're anticipating, uh, a cost increase. Similarly, what we've seen when we were looking at the, uh, Public Works vehicle. These contracts are usually in place for a one- or two-year period under the state, and then they're rebid and renewed. Um, so the anticipation for a, a cost increase coming again after the end of March.
Are there other cities that use the Panasonic?
Oh, yeah, they're, I'm sure they're... They're very widely used. Um, uh, one of the cities that just received the, uh, their delivery was Forest Lake. City of Forest Lake is just receiving, uh, the same Mark VII that we would be proposing to purchase for their entire department also.
You've seen them in operation and...
We have, uh, we've got one here, um, that the officers have been looking at, looking at the different mounts. Um, the mounts that we've been looking at and proposed in, in this purchase. Instead of a sewn-on mount that would, the camera clicks to, it's actually a magnetic, uh, mount, so that there's a magnetic side on the back of your shirt and then on the front, and when you think of magnet, but it is extremely strong. You have to be careful when you put them on. If you have your fingers in the wrong place, you're gonna get, get pinched. The magnets are really strong. But it gives that flexibility to be able to, uh, put it where it needs to be and not have multiple, uh, mounts sewn on, you know, vests and, and things like that, and, and keeping the cost down.
Any questions for City Manager? Councilmember Thorson?
Uh, yeah, I guess my question was, uh, you know, there's one quote here, but I, I thought our city purchasing policy states anything over twenty thousand needs, is it at least two, or is it three?
It's three, but because this is on the, it meets the bidding requirements because it's on state contract.
Okay, and our policy still just, it's, it, if it, if it's a state contract, then, then we don't need to seek out other bids?
Right, because they've, they've gone out and, and done the bidding process, um, you know, for that, and, and so we're a member of that state procurement process.
So it's similar to like buying a fire truck when we're, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, thank you, um, City Manager. Um, I have a question regards to the costs, the cost differences between the Panasonic and the alternative.
The, the equipment cost is virtually the same. That, that is virtually the same with, with most of the providers. Um, the other large one in the, in the system is Axon. It is substantially more expensive for the cloud storage. And I don't, don't have that, that number in, in written form to show you, but the, the cloud storage is more expensive. Um, and obviously, the more data that you store, the more that you're paying for that. And the other thing that we did find in, in discussing it with our, uh, IT staff is just that concern that, it's fine when you're under contract, but should you make a change, that's when you run into significant costs. And we've experienced that, um, when we came off of a records management system, um, with another agency, um, that was managing the whole system. And so when we left that agency and that records management system, they provided all the data in raw form, but because we didn't have access to that proprietary software, then we had to hire a third-party, um, vendor to be able to, to do that. So the cost was, became very prohibitive.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson, anything?
When's the anticipated time of ordering them, and when will they, uh, they'll start wearing them? I suppose there's some training involved?
Yeah, there'll be significant training, and I think, you know, just like I mentioned before, we wanna make sure we bring this back to council and, and look at policies and any questions that there is along with this. But there's a, uh, I believe it's about a six-week order period for the equipment. And again, we wanna make sure that we hit this, uh, order timeline before March 31st. So with the council approval, the order would be placed immediately.
Would it be beneficial to have, uh, us take a look at it? The, uh, physical camera, just to take a peek at it at workshop or a meeting next, one of our meetings? If you have an officer?
I could certainly, well, we don't, we don't have anything that's operational. We just have a, a demo box that they sent us. That's all it is. So we don't have an operational system yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
At some point, it'd be...
Oh, absolutely.
To look and see what the...
Right.
I'm more curious than anything to...
Yes.
See what it looks like.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
Can you speak to the, uh, the image clarity?
Well, the clarity and, and voice recording, um, is phenomenally different. In fact, right now, um, officers will wear a, a microphone, um, that can be recorded to the, to the vehicle or the car camera. That will no longer be needed under this scenario. Uh, that's all unincluded in one, one device. I mean, there's still an opportunity that you can decide to use both as a redundant system, but all agencies have dropped that. So, yeah, clarity and voice recording is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And, and the, also the durability. I mean, these cameras are, are very, very durable, you know, weather resistant, you know, and really, when I said, they don't cover them unless you run them over, but drops and falls and all that stuff, they're, they're designed for that type of use.
Thank you.
The motion is, uh, resolution authorizing the purchase of body worn cameras. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cole, second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, if you take the roll?
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Aye. We have some body cameras to order.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else, Council, well, we'll...
Have those, uh, a couple items to bring back.
Yep, so we'll bring, uh, item D, which is a general accounts payable of nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents. And, uh, Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, this is on page thirty-one of the packet. It's the credit card summary, just again, pointing out that we need to follow our policies that we have, um, adopted, and there's missing receipts and forms not filled out according to this form. So I just wanna remind everyone that we have an obligation to follow that policy that we've adopted.
Councilmember Wong, did you have something in regards to the general accounts payable?
Is the form a digital form, or is it a paper form? For, for staff to fill out?
Oh, oh, it, it's a paper form, um, and that's, all those, uh, like I said, we're making those, uh, stream, and, and on mine, they're reoccurring. And that's the problem. They're a reoccurring invoice, uh, and taking steps to get that corrected.
Okay, thank you.
And also get them corrected and move to the department that is using them, uh, because mu- many of those are not even under my, my monthly use.
So you're on notice right now.
Good.
So the motion is for the general accounts payable of nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Taken by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed nay. Jenny, if you take the roll?
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye. And the next item is, item H is the purchase of energy saving kits. And I believe Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Thorson, so, Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I guess I, you know, again, I think we have an obligation to get multiple bids for things, and I, I'm a little confused in looking at this on page one. Looks like the vendor is AM Conservation Group out of Charleston, South Carolina, and they've got two estimates. Looks like it was hand subtotal at the bottom, seventy-seven thousand, sixty-nine. This is on page forty-two of the packet. And then on page forty-one, it says Creative Resources Quote. And then, you know, there's some items there, and it's subtotal at the bottom, seventy-three dollars and seven cents, and then it says total, not including tax, one thirty-five, nine, ten. So I'm just, is, is this a separate bid for the same items, or is this...
Do we have the department head?
You?
Yes, I'm here.
Brian, did you hear the, the, the question?
I did.
Are you able to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, these are separate entities, separate businesses, and they don't, um, quote the same exact item, which is part of the issue of getting the quotes to be able to compare apples to apples. You write it up of what you're looking for, whether or not it's the, um, you know, the bulbs or the aerators, and they determine where they go to get their quotes and bids that they can then turn back over to me. So, um, I, I don't control that end. I tell them what I'm looking for, and they go out and make their, um, quotes, and then turn that back in to me.
Okay. So, and, 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 you know, again, it's just the way this quote was done. I mean, I'm, you know, the, like, on the first line, it says quantity, one thousand eight sixty. Line total, two forty. I'm assuming they're saying that's two dollars and forty cents per one item? I'm, I'm just trying to follow along with this quote and where that total comes from.
Uh, the total comes from the, I'm sorry, the, uh, the kit cost, um, or cost per kit. So through AM Conservation, the cost per kit for the items was forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Per the other company that gave us the bid, their cost was over seventy dollars per kit.
Okay, so these are two separate bids?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep, sorry about that.
Okay.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, um, thank you, Brian. Um, I have a question in regards to, um, uh, the Conservation Improvement Program here that you have. So part of it, can you help me understand, um, a little bit about the history of the program and what kind of CIP programs have, um, been implemented in the past here?
So we could have a long conversation on that. This has been around a while. This has, um, come out as a, it's a state mandate. Uh, they require this. Uh, even the, the requirements of the program have changed over time. Uh, when this program first started, it was, you needed to spend a certain amount of money on conservation improvement programs. It has since been upgraded several times, and now they want you to save a certain amount of energy per dollar saved, uh, or per dollar spent, excuse me. So that's what it comes down to now. This is all state mandated. It's one point five percent of the utility's gross income, um, which is that total I gave you of hundred and thirty-six thousand. We work with Avant Energy, who is our power supplier. Um, they help run this program. They run this program in conjunction with the city. We collaborate together to come up with different programs. Um, so this program came about, uh, we've done EcoKit programs for quite a while now, and a lot of times, they're given away at City Hall. We give them to our linemen out in the field. So when they're working around the public, you know, they'll give them out to people whose yards we happen to be working at the time. I think the, the beauty of this project was being able to work with the schools and being able to give them to the children there. Part of it is, uh, an energy, or a part of it is about the, uh, education part of the program. We, in these kits, there's, there's two separate kind of kits. I believe one is K through third grade, if I remember correctly, and then third through eighth. And then it is an energy-saving little brochure, um, for the kids that, uh, little ways to save energy, things that use energy around the house, ways that they can help improve energy consumption. Um, and they use puzzles and, and toys and, or, uh, puzzles and, uh, little games, and it's like a coloring book as well to get them involved. And then the kid is brought home to the parents to use the products at home. So it was kinda nice to be able to get it out to people that we maybe don't get all the time, that don't come into City Hall. While things have changed drastically now, with the pandemic, not as many people are even coming into City Hall to get these products. So this is a good way to get it out to the public. And the schools are very excited to, uh, get on board with this.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the educational component? In regards to this, you mentioned, is it a, a pre-established curriculum, or are the educators teaching it? I, I ask because, you know, I, I don't have children, but, um, I, I do work with, and I've worked with youth, and sending home a kit sometimes may not make it back. So I just wanna make sure, you know, um, you know, once that education component is there, then that connection is there too, and it'll get to the parents.
So I guess one thing I'd like to express on this as well is part of the SIP program, which is Conservation Improvement. So we put these books in there, uh, in addition to the packet, that we actually don't save any money by giving these books out. Um, this was just an idea that we had to have something in there for the children, and also to be an educational, uh, part of it. This, this is not a requirement that the teachers have to teach a program that go along with this. So, for example, the, one of the little brochures in here, it's called Sparky the Energy, Energy Saving Squirrel. So it has little activities in there that tells kids, uh, things that through the house, and shows them what they can. And then with those games, it kinda backs it up and keeps them engaged as well. Hopefully, they can sit down with their parents and kinda look at it. Hopefully they can sit down with their parents and kind of look at it. But it is not a requirement of the kit. We threw that in there for the children since that was our path to getting it into the homes. But actually, we don't get any credit towards conservation by having these brochures. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Brian, a question was brought up earlier in regards to the McKnight Field Lights. Is that part of any type of program that we could use for replacement of those lights for the fields? Can they be retrofitted to LED? Is that something that you've looked into in the past or?
Certainly, because those bulbs are there are fifteen hundred watts per bulb.
Is that bright?
Yes. So, and I looked into this a little more in depth because I heard the high school, this is several years back now. They redid their soccer field off of Margaret Street there. And when they went in and redid that, I believe that cost was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. So it was an exorbitant amount of money for, to spend to get some energy savings out of it. It just didn't make sense at the time. I know prices have come down. It's probably been a year or two since I've looked into it, so I, I will look into it again. But those prices were rather high for these large ball field type lighting fixtures. Because this, changing a bulb, it's usually a fixture in itself.
Sure. And Brian, I think the question is, is if that is something, is our two percent money available to be used for that?
Oh, great question. So let me, give me an example. So we went and we relit the whole town with the, we used to have high pressure sodium bulbs, the bulbs that you saw that were orange in color. We changed every bulb out and fixture out in town to LEDs. So we can really get into long stories with this, but so we, three hundred thousand dollars we spent on changing bulbs or these fixtures from high pressure sodium to LED. We were only able to receive credit for about thirty-two thousand dollars worth. So we had to spend a lot of money to really get the money back that we were required to spend through the state. So it, it took a few years to get through that because of the cost of it. So not every dollar you spend gives you credit towards what your, your bottom line is of what you have to spend. So if I spend, say, two hundred dollars on a LED light, I go out and change it out. You have, it's not only the cost of the light, you know, you have labor hours and you have equipment. I might only get, you know, a third of that money back of that cost will count towards that, you know, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we see that we have to spend. It's not a dollar for dollar that we get credit for. The time that that happens though is with these energy kits. And when there's another part of this program that one point five percent of your gross has to be spent, but then twenty percent of that one point five percent has to be spent on low income. So we've done programs through the food shelf. We've done programs with some section eight housing to where every dollar you spend counts towards the dollars that you have to spend towards the state mandate. Hopefully I explained that well. Does that make sense?
Sounded good. I think, you know, accepting that it, we're interested in those fields down there. And if the cost is, you know, if the payback is in a couple of years, yeah, it might be worth it to, to do something like that. But I'm sure Brian is looking at that and, you know, the savings got to be there for us in order to do that. So keep, keep, keep looking at it, I guess.
I will.
Thank you, Brian. I hate to have put you on the spot like this, but.
No, not at all.
It was very informative.
And can just, Brian, were you listening to the workshop meeting?
I'm sorry, I did not see it.
Okay, so just a little more context there. The discussion, how we got to the ball field lights and not just at McKnight, but you know, all the parks, you know, Casey Field and what have you, was, you know, we're looking at the fees and traditionally we've never charged, you know, organizations like the school district or NSPAA to use the ball fields, but to get a better grasp of the actual costs. And I know we've discussed this in the past, but again, it's probably worth revisiting. To get that actual cost of firing up those lights and when they're running, what, what, and we all understand that's a significant cost because they, you know, like you said, they're at fifteen hundred watts per bulb. But just so we can get an idea of what the true costs to run that field are when we're looking at these things would be helpful. So that's kind of where this came from. So any information you can provide will be helpful, yep.
And I would, I've ran those numbers many times. And just to give you an idea, if you turn all four of those fields on for a fifteen minute time period, the demand for those field is over two thousand dollars for that month. That gives you an idea of how much that demand is. Now, the power consumption for KWH is much less, but it's, it's significant.
And that's where we're trying to struggle to say, well, and, and as you pointed out, you know, the cost to retrofit these, it's, it's not just going up there and swapping out a bulb. It's the whole fixture. But if, if in the long term, we can save significant amounts of money by converting to LED, that's where we would want to consider that. And if this program helps reduce some of those costs because we're mandated to spend it, then it, you know, can help in decision making. So that's where this is coming from. Being as that, you, you know, it was a workshop discussion about that, so.
Absolutely. I will get some numbers together for you guys. So I will find out what current cost of those lights are and what, what that would cost to change them out and give us an idea of what the payback would be on there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
Yeah, I, I have a quick question.
Sorry, Brian.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, I would love to connect and collaborate. I know it's not really a requirement of, of you and your, your department to provide education. But if you are interested, I would love to find some partnership in the community to provide energy, you know, some sort of energy education, like a perhaps some 4H club or something around that. Just so we make sure that the money is spent is actually, you know, building knowledge for youth, but then also it's taken home and actually used. So just to reinforce that investment of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
If you don't mind, I could share a little bit with, with our power agency. So we've had probably over twenty thousand kids that have gone through the Faribault Energy Park Plant down in Faribault. Since we started a program, they, they've done this with the fourth graders throughout the junior, or the, the schools here in town. For bringing them down there and we've worked with the Science Museum. And they have a program that they work with educating the kids about energy, how it works, where it comes from. They also do a tour around the generating plant down there. That's a two hundred and fifty megawatt plant that we have down there. So we actually have a pretty good program right now of, of education for children with energy savings. And for a while there, I was giving tours to the Century College of the wind generator there at the shop. They haven't called to ask for that lately, but, so we are involved with the community with that stuff. But yes, we can, I'm certainly willing to collaborate where it makes sense.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So at this time, a motion is the purchase of energy saving kits. It's our motion.
So moved.
Moved by council member Thorson. Seconded by council member Cole. All those in favor signify by saying aye, oppose nay. Jenny, if you take the roll.
Council member Thorson?
Aye.
Council member Peterson?
Aye.
Council member Wong?
Aye.
Council member Cole?
Aye.
Mayor Furlong?
Aye.
Okay, reports of city manager and departments.
Mayor, council, I guess, just continuing on with our normal routine updates. Today, a milestone within the downtown construction was windows.
Windows.
Windows are going in the building. Yes. So the, the progress continues down there. I think there's, here's a phase of excitement, I guess I'll say. I had a phone call today from the post office. And the post office was wondering if we have set the address for the building and also the individual apartment units. And I was thinking, wow, that's really, normally that's not an issue, but I think they're seeing the, the progression out there and they're expecting the building to be done much sooner. You know, I told them we're looking at a September date and they thought it was going to be something much quicker. So they were anticipating that. But just as our post office is also paying attention and seeing the, the momentum and changes downtown quickly. So that's going on. The Anchor View Apartments started last week. So they started their excavation and they actually pouring concrete footings. So that project is now underway. Did talk to, when we were talking with Brian, our electric director. I'd also talked to QuickTrip last week and as Brian was inquiring about the electric transformers and things for that building because some of these transformers, if we don't have them in stock, are long lead times. So they provided us our electric load for that to make sure we're prepared for them as they start their construction. And again, especially with QuickTrip because they're going to be a relatively fast build to make sure that we have the equipment and available for them for, for providing service. Things are moving along well, gearing up with this, with the spring construction and getting our meetings back in place for our weekly, our weekly meetings for the downtown construction as that gets started. And then just ongoing with these projects and, and keeping things in play. The business association meeting, we, we had that, we mentioned that at the last meeting. But things like you seen tonight with the downtown streetscapes, we can keep all those things moving ahead and being prepared for them. You know, we were, I think everybody was assuming or thought that spring was here. We had sixty degree weather and then we were brought back to awareness under the snowstorm for a couple inches. But spring is very close around, road restrictions are on. We received lots of phone calls on contractors about road restrictions and roll-off dumpsters or things like that coming in or project work to work with contractors about that also. School district, I don't remember if I mentioned this. We did meet with them with their ongoing collaboration with the possible different uses of buildings in the city. So we've, we've talked about those and we'll have some more information coming back in upcoming meetings with that process also. And we'll be having a meeting with the school district on field use as we were talking about that this evening to, to talk about how we can share those uses and cover cost because the school district is preparing for their use. We are also been working heavily with the school district. They're proposing the addition to North High. And as we're looking at that and trying to do some pre-planning before that, pre-application, I guess I would say, or their application has actually been submitted now, that will eventually come to planning commission and ultimately to council. But there are some very significant changes being proposed with their plan. Not only the, an addition to the building, but a complete, a complete rework of the parking lot and traffic flows of both the high school lots and the lot in front of Polar Arena. And the significance behind it is, in the first rendition that we've seen, would have a proposed loss of a hundred and four parking stalls, which was very concerning to me on a high school to lose that type of parking. So we had a, a meeting the other day to, to voice all these concerns and so that they can make sure that they're, they've got the supporting documents and research and everything behind it and where we go with that. And if they've got alternative parking for that, but just know that that will be coming. And but we're spending a lot of time with that to get that packaged and ready to come forward to planning commission and ultimately to council. So lots of, lots of continued activities in many different areas.
Any word on the, those gas, XL, gas mains?
No, Public Works is following up with that because they were, had sound studies done up there to see what the status is on that. It's been very frustrating to us because it, you know, the winter time is the worst condition up there, especially when we had that thirty below, the, the gas that flows through there, summer months are nothing like what winter is. And so we want to make sure that that's, not only is it documented, but that we were expecting that something was going to be done at least temporarily, immediately to help the neighbors that, that are adjoining that. And obviously that hasn't happened. So we're, we're staying on that and there'll be other, besides those and the noise issues, but also the gas regulator station at South and Henry where there's the, the small building there. Just the whole curb appeal of that and, and it's very unsightly up there right now. So we're going to keep pushing with that.
Any questions for city manager?
I'll just to comment on that. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, that's a concern. But there's also an expectation that, you know, we live in a city with heated homes. I mean, you're going to have this kind of stuff. And so I'd just be cautious about, you know, if we're going to demand upon XL that they make some sort of remedy that doesn't exist for that, you know? I mean, is it that bothersome to put up with some, a little noise from the gas mains? I mean, we have to have these things run through our city. There's infrastructure that's needed to heat your home. Just putting that out there that, you know, I don't, I hope we're not putting this perception that if someone thinks it's too loud, we're going to end that. I mean, I don't know how that can happen. I mean, they still have to deliver gas. And like you say, it's, the demand increases in the winter because there's more gas moving through those pumps. That's what you're hearing. So I don't.
I think they've put them in houses before, they've enclosed them.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's one of the remedies, but I think that's an expense that, you know, we didn't have those before. That's my.
But there, I mean, they've been around, they're on, on Seventh and South. They moved them from a residential property across the street and they still make the noise. I mean, it's not, it's not like this is something new. I think it's just those didn't exist in that particular area. But just pointing that out, that it's a minor inconvenience for the comforts that we have come accustomed to, so.
Although, some of the adjoining property owners, I know they've done their own sound studies and per that, they, they're exceeding the, the noise limits. And so that's what we're wanting to, is to make sure that we can help with what we can. Reports of council, commissioners committees, council member Cole.
Not a, not a whole lot to report. Next park and rec meeting is next Wednesday night, March twenty-fourth at six-thirty via Zoom.
Council member Wong?
We have a planning commission meeting this Thursday at six-thirty via Zoom.
Council member Thorson?
The EDA met on, was it March ninth? Meeting minutes are available online and there should be a link to the Zoom meeting as well. There's just some brief discussion on potential restaurant financial grants and some updated from, some proposed flooding maps from, what was that, the county or the watershed district?
Watershed and DNR.
Yeah, and then just some general updates, nothing that important to note. And then the business association met and it didn't have quite as good of a turnout as the last meeting. But we're going to hope to continue that as the weather gets nicer and more people get involved and start coming to that on a regular basis, so.
Council member Peterson?
Yes, I was on a conference call yesterday with the National President of the National League of Cities. And he was quite an interesting guy. His warning was that cities, you know, like ours or any, any kind of city must plan for the next twenty years, just being futuristic in their thinking. And there's just going to be a lot of changes with this pandemic, you know, or this virus behind us. And he was just really interesting. And I have a leak meeting on Thursday and the June conference will be discussed. It's going to be in Rochester. They don't know if it's going to be in person yet or virtual, all that you know on that. But they're hoping to have it in person in Rochester. That's all I have, thanks.
And I have nothing, general business, council member Cole?
I think several of us in here attended a Zoom. I think several of us in here attended a Zoom meeting on Monday afternoon, put on by Senator Wiger with Mindot. Several topics were on there. One of the, one of the major topics was the intersection of Highway 36 and 120, along with the entire 120 corridor from basically County Road E up in White Bear, all the way south to 94. So at this point in time, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of passion that went around the conversation, but no real movement from a timing standpoint. That's all I got.
Councilmember Wong?
I don't have anything to add today.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I was on that meeting and I'll just provide a little more detail. I mean, there's, there's a link that was emailed to everyone and maybe we can work on getting that involved, included in our minutes. So if, you know, we're discussing this, we can add that in so people can click on that. There's a link to the Zoom meeting and the, the agenda. But just to focus on how North St. Paul is full, you know, involved with Highway 20 and 36. I mean, this is a topic that's been, you know, 20, 30 years being discussed and there seems to be no traction moving forward. At one point, Mindot stated that they have no, it's, it's unfunded project. They have no plans to, to do anything there. They, they stated their goal is for preservation, pavement preservation, meaning if the road was collapsing, they would look into fixing it. But just keeping what they have and no major undertaking, like a major road intersection reconstruction project like was discussed back in 2012 or 2013 when they did that study. Washington County Commissioner Stan, what was his name?
Stan, Stan Kowalski.
Stan Kowalski, yep. He, he made up a great point that it's a state road, state highway, 120 and 36, and it is their responsibility. And Mindot's response was, well, we have no funding for it. So it just kind of keeps getting pushed back and forth. I brought up, I mean, you can Google search or internet search whatever you want to see. Just type in Highway 36 and 120 fatalities. There's news stories, the last one I believe was in 2011. A North St. Paul resident was struck and she killed, she died. She was pushing a stroller and amazingly, her infant wasn't harmed. But that was a fatality that was, you know, dealing with pedestrian traffic. And then a year prior, there was an Oakdale resident, I believe he was 19 years old. He was struck jogging. So Mindot has acknowledged that this is one of the most dangerous intersections in the metro. There's projects taking place around it. Hadley and 36 was just completed. We went through McKnight and 36, McKnight and Margaret. But they just seem to not want to make this a priority. So I think the goal, or from what I, my takeaway was, we as a city need to continue to, on a regular basis, pass a resolution in support of this and then encourage Oakdale, Ramsey County and Washington County to do the same. And then we really need to work with our state legislatures to have them make this a point of focus and get this included in some sort of bonding bill or however that works at the state. And if reaching out federally helps, then we need to do that too. But basically, the takeaway is Mindot is not going to be the lead on this. This needs to be driven by us locally. And that's what they basically said several times. So whatever that is, I think we need to make that a major focus and continue to pursue that.
I can just add to that. I did talk to Representative Lilly and he and Senator Wiger are going to be working on putting a bill together to at least get this thing started or trying to push it forward. And then both of them would be in touch with their federal, our federal representatives also to try to start moving this along. Because as Councilmember Thorson said, this has been going on forever. You know, Mindot previously was, when we've met here years ago. It's not in the 10-year capital plan, but we'll, we'll work on it. And now this change has been different than it's the preservation. Washington County made the offer that they would, they'd be willing to, you know, take, be the lead agency on it. Ramsey County, Victoria Reinhardt was there. We've got great support there from the county. Ted Shonaker, the Ramsey County Public Works Director, have been very supportive with this, so. But I think that's probably likely what it's going to come down to, is one of the counties or both of the counties, you know, spurring it on. But it is a Highway 36 and Highway 120, so it is truly there. The comment was made about the intersections on 36 in, in Washington County, why those are moving forward. And the reason those are per Mindot is the, Washington County had put significant dollars into those and Mindot was the last dollar in per se. And that's why those projects are moving forward, so. But there's, there's seemingly definitely frustrating momentum, I think. And the message was pretty clear to our legislative people that something needs to be done. And so that was a comment that I heard from Representative Lilly, that he and Wiger will be working on a bill.
It's funny how they, you know, the meeting we had last year, how they attached, you know, we talked about the 30, strictly the 36 project.
Right.
And then all of a sudden it turned into from County Road E or whatever, down to 94. Wow. How much money is that?
Right.
I mean, that's even way beyond.
I think the number was thrown out 40 million was an estimate for this intersection.
Just for this intersection.
Yeah.
So I, I agree.
Councilmember Peterson? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, we have a very active art council down here in Orange Beach. I attended their festival this weekend and I got a bunch of information. And I'll bring it back to you with City Manager Scott Duda. Because I know we talked about, you know, kind of reviving our council and I've got a lot of good ideas and that I'm kind of excited about it. And I'd like to wish everybody Happy Easter. That's it.
Okay. And I don't have anything at this time, except to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'll be in the parade tomorrow, which is going to be a, a different parade. We'll be driving by, I believe, all the folks in the Sears parking lot. That's the parade. Are you in the parade tomorrow?
I am not.
Mayor, one thing I'd like to add to, that at our next council meeting, I think we'll be implementing it probably on a monthly basis, and that would be donations received by the city.
Yep.
We'll bring forward a, a resolution proposal that we would list the donations received for the, for the prior period of time. And we would bring that forward for council to, to review and formally accept. And I think it also gives us a, an opportunity to recognize and thank those donors that are, that are making donations to the city. And there will be an opportunity with the documents that we're putting together that people can donate and they can specify where they want those funds to go and what they'd be used for. So they're designated for that and people can rest assured that their donations are not just going into a, a general fund that they can, they'll direct them where they would like them to be used.
And people can sign up with their electrical bills. You know, we did it at the liquor store for five years, six years. Every month they took out 20 bucks, so.
Yeah. And we'll be trying to look at, you know, that and how we can promote that more and make this more of a, a program that's readily known. And we're seeing it again on some of the OpenGov software, on the park uses where we're, we're coming in there. But like you mentioned, on utility bills and things like that. But, so that is truly something that you, people can direct and, and see and we can thank those people on a monthly basis.
And again, I think we've drive more people to that website. I think we're going to get a lot more bang for our buck.
Yes.
A lot more benefit, so. Very good. Matt, anything else? Candy, how is, are you down in?
75 and sunny, but we've got some bad weather coming in the morning, so we'll see.
Okay. We'll bring home some warm weather with you.
Yes, I will.
At this time, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Jenny, if you take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Here for long.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.